Call a meeting to order of Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, November 29th, 2022. Dave can't be with us tonight, so I'll be filling in with forum as a chair. Mr. Pinho, do we have a need for non-public this evening?
We do have a minor item under employment.
Okay. We have no minutes to consider, there's no public hearings, no bulk vote, no Board or Committee appointments, so our next order of business will be, we're going to have a motion to go into, to meet as trustees of the Libby Museum.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're now meeting as trustees of the Libby Museum, and we've invited the representatives from the Friends to be here with us tonight. Do you folks want to come up to the table, so you can sit at the microphones and stuff? And it can be easier to have a dialogue that way, I think, so you pull up more chairs if you need there, or whatever. So I'm not sure how, we're just probably going to have a discussion here, go over some of the items and stuff we got. I do understand that the Friends would like to meet and go over the comments that we had on the business plan, so you didn't really, weren't really prepared to discuss that tonight? Am I correct in assuming that?
Yeah, since we received the comments in writing a week ago, and it encompassed the long holiday weekend, we haven't had a chance to meet and discuss the comments.
Okay.
So I think that should be deferred for a later time.
Motion, so we'll talk about it, all the other, anything else we want to hear and stuff. Do you guys want to start? Do you have a statement or anything? Do you want us to?
Well, I guess let me start with a statement of where we are.
Okay.
Basically, we stand behind a pledge or a commitment to $2.2 million of private donations in support of the 2023 warrant article for the restoration of the Libby Museum as shown by the 2019 Alba design. We feel that that's really the capacity that we have. It goes a little bit above the original 70% in the MOU, based on the $2.9 million. When we saw Cobb Hill's revisements and the enthusiasm of some of our donors, we felt we could go above $2 million, and we really stand behind the $2.2 million commitment to basically help the town meet their financial obligations to the maintenance and restoration of the building.
Okay. Board members, Lynda?
I just have one clarification. The MOU talked about a 70-30 split, and in it, we had a paragraph or last sentence that allowed the Board of Selectmen that this wasn't a contract, because we cannot commit for the voters.
Yep.
So in essence, we're putting this out now. This is done, because you can't meet the 70%. That's what, that was what the-
It was never written as an open-ended 70%.
Oh, yes, it was.
Nope. The last sentence of the first paragraph constrains that very clearly, that consideration to the cost escalation from the 2019 estimated price of $2.9 million has not been considered for this MOU.
But then you go down to the next one, the town contingent upon raising 70% of the total project intends to produce a warrant article for the voters to consider appropriating 30% of the cost of the project. That's clearly what, when I was in those negotiations, when I said that, that that was the agreement. I have no problem saying this is put off to the side, because you can't meet that. And then we're not obligated to put a warrant on, then we can then talk about where we are, but this, I think, is finished.
Given where the numbers have recently ended up, we never would have been able to make a 70% commitment to begin with.
I understand that. I just want to get this off the table, and that we, you know, you've done, you've raised 2.2.
Yes.
Congratulations, but I just want to make sure, because there were some questions about what the paragraphs meant.
Certainly.
I'm very comfortable, put it off to the side, and then let's look at where we are, if that's okay.
Let's move forward and see where we have to get.
Do we feel as though we need to work on coming up with a new, a revised MOU then to kind of states where we're at, as far as the agreement between the Friends and the trustees go here?
I still think there's a lot of questions on what the actual cost is going to be. So when we have a 70-30 split, and we don't really have an exact number, we have two different quotes, one's high, one's low, so how do we know how much to go to the voters for?
Usually, when we do something like this, we'll do the engineering and go out to bid with bid documents, so we know that we have a price that's going to hold. I think that's the other issue I'm having.
In my opinion, it looks like we're going to have to go out for the higher amount to the voters, because we can't go out and then be short.
I completely agree that establishing a firm price for the project is essential, but that's, we're not construction experts. We are, we have done our fundraising.
Yep.
But where the price moved in this environment is completely out of our control, but you as the town, you're pricing other major projects. I don't see how the pricing of this is handled any differently.
The Public Safety Building is going out to bid. We will have, by the time it goes out, to warrant a bid price.
And we've cut it, so that it's going to fall within a budget that is more reasonable, millions of dollars less than what original quotes were, so.
I also understand, too, correct if I'm wrong, Mr. Pinho, but did we reach out to Alba to do a comparison and have conversation, I believe, with Cobb Hill on, to compare the Bowin and the Cobb Hill numbers together and get back to us with comments on that?
We did, and they provided us with a document. That document discusses some of the overages, and it also lays out where and why those may be. Other ones, it's unexplained. You know, the takeaway, you know, Bowincorp and Cobb Hill are both very reputable firms. They've come up with two vastly different numbers, you know, and some of that can be explained by better quality products, such as the windows. Other things can be explained, such as contingencies. You know, there was a larger contingency placed in by Bowincorp, which I have to agree with. I think that the contingency which Cobb Hill put together is cutting it very tight, because we don't know what we're going to run into with that building and property once we start working. So I think there are efficiencies that can be gained on the Bowin quote, but I don't know if it'll get us back to the Cobb Hill estimate.
We just had, we just ordered a new ladder truck. We paid for it cash, and when we went to pick it up, they said, "You owe us a quarter of a million dollars," because it costs more now than when we started. So, and we spent six months negotiating that, so that's a small piece compared to a $4 million project. There are going to be problems, there are going to be contingencies. I don't know if maybe we set a number, and then if we have to, we cut the building. Do we set a number and say, "This is it. This is our dollar amount, we're going to spend. You have this much. The taxpayers are going to get 30% of the total project, it's this much." We have to make sure that includes parking, tree removal, everything, soup to nuts, all said and done. And then if all of a sudden, when we start to do construction, they come back and they say, "Well, it's going to be another half a million dollars more for contingency," it's going to be, no, cut the project. Downgrade the windows, downgrade the flooring, cut the square footage, because we have to, when I build a house, I have a budget. I get it from the bank, they tell me I can spend this. I build it for that. I don't magically just build it for another $150,000. I cut where I have to, on my flooring, my windows, my doors, whatever.
Lynda?
Yeah, I have that sheet that Jim was talking about, and the difference is 1.2 million between the two. So it's not like we're dealing with a small amount. That could have a real impact on the project, and that's why I'm saying if you go out to bid, and this is, my feeling is, and I believe this can happen if your donors are going to be, but if we could put this off a year, go out to bid and get a bid document.
Unfortunately, that doesn't work for our donors. There are major donations that are committed to a warrant article in 2023, and we won't be back here with 2.2 million next year. It's, we've, we've had some conversations with these donors, and this has been proposed now for four years, and it, they see it just getting pushed and pushed, and that's the reality, is that they, they put this money forward with some urgency, and, you know, if the price is going to be higher next year, and we, we very well would be coming in with a lower private donation amount. It's, it's, and, you know, we're, we've worked very hard to get these donations where they are, and we're not willing to tear it up and basically start from scratch again. We don't have the energy and the capacity to go through another major round of fundraising.
And I guess that puts me with Brian, with 1.2 million in difference, we're going to have to take the highest and biggest number, which is going to make this warrant article big, you know, from what we're asking the taxpayer, as we're also asking them for 12 million for a Public Safety Building. That's the other thing that makes this year very hard for us to kind of weigh things out, so that's where I am.
Okay. I, I understand the numbers have come as a surprise, but the fact that this is coming, the restoration is coming forward shouldn't be a surprise. It's been in process for four years now.
No, there's no surprise in this. I don't, I didn't mean to apply any of that.
I just-
What is too bad is that we had such inflation, which is what is putting you in a bind and us in a bind.
Yeah.
So 70% of 3.15 million is your 2.2 million?
Yeah.
So a way to do it is to put a cap on and say, "We can build a museum for 3.15 million dollars, end of story." That's it. You get what you get, and that's all.
There also needs to be some understanding that, as we talked about at our June meeting, that we were, we came to agreement that we could offer donors some naming rights to various aspects of the building, from the balcony, to the preservation room, to the gallery room, to the director's office, and so forth. If those types of items are getting cut out of it, then the donations go away also.
Because at 3.15 million, we're, we're going to be asking the citizens of Wolfboro, the taxpayers, for more than we initially thought, too. We thought we were going to be, what, 700,000 originally we were going to be asking for? And now we're going to be up to a million.
Tom, I have a question. We, when you, I, and Jim and Ed Bowin met a few weeks ago, we had a conversation, or a part of a conversation, about moving, you know, moving the warrant article forward this year, with the, to satisfy the donors and everything, the warrant article would go on, assuming it gets passed, but with construction starting in 2024 to give us the opportunity to put things out to bid and be able to adjust some components of it to try and draw the price down, has the Board had any of those conversations there or thoughts on that process?
We have talked a bit about that. The general tenor was that we would rather not see the warrant article have a firm 2024 start date, that there may be aspects that could begin sooner, but we all understand that once a warrant article passes, that each aspect of the construction gets put out to competitive bid, so both the town and our donors get the best value for their money.
Yep.
And that that will take a little bit of time, but if, if elements can be started before 2024, that would be our preference. But we do understand that it's-
Right.
It's a, it's a long project.
Yeah.
It's going to take time.
Good Year's project, I'd say, anyway, so.
But there may be some hesitancy with a couple of our donors if there's a hard 2024 start date in the warrant article.
We're going to have to look seriously hard at whatever number we come up with here, if we come up with a number, that when it does come to looking at the actual furnishings and/or what's being used in this building, is where we're going to be able to potentially save costs here, like Brian was saying, you know. I think that's, you know, for instance, in the first round of the Public Safety Building, you know, there was a brick facade being put back on, and that was like a $200,000 addition to the building. Things like that going forward are going to be where we potentially can cut costs without cutting the, the project, in a sense, like you can still get the same value, but looking at different ways of doing it, and certainly making sure this goes out to many people, get as many bid backs as possible. But I think it's going to fall somewhere, having been in construction for 20 years, I think it's going to probably fall somewhere in the middle of these two numbers, but we're going to need to work really hard to get, to keep the price down.
Well, we don't have very long to do that, which is too bad, again. We're at the end here, and we're going to have to come up with a number, and whatever that number is, we're going to have to have a plan, that, because that's what they're going to want. They're going to want to see what you're, they're putting their money for, so we're going to have to have a set plan. I don't think we can go and say, "Well, we're going to give this and cut this off and cut the other. This is what we're going to build."
And the problem with that, too, is if, I mean, if we put up a number of $4 million, we go into bidding next year, we know that every contractor in the world is going to find out what our maximum amount is, and that number is going to come as close to that as possible, or over it. I mean, that just, it is what it is, but-
You know, we're caught, we're trapped.
We are.
You know, I would have preferred to put it out to bid and have the bid price, and then we'd be there, and we'd be set, and there'd be no problem, but we don't. And so, you know, we can go less and take the risk of not being able to complete it. I'm, I don't have construction knowledge. He has far more, so I don't know what kind of a risk we're taking if we go somewhere between the two. I don't think in here, is there, there's not the moving? Have we gotten any quote on what it's going to take for us to move that stuff out, store it, and?
We've received a preliminary document on it. I believe the woman from MCL, I believe it is, is scheduled to come in and give a brief presentation to the Board on that, but I want to say that's a $30,000 figure, if I remember correctly. If the Board likes, I mean, I can reach out to Cobb Hill. They've put their numbers here and asked them if they are confident enough in their numbers that they could give us a draft contract with a guaranteed maximum price.
That would be a nice way to do it, because that would be kind, we'd know for sure what we're dealing with if they could do that for us. And that's something that would make it, to me, easier to sell, because you have not to exceed. We kind of got that with the library. They decided not to exceed at a price. That would be an option.
I mean, it's their number, if they're going to stand behind it, then hopefully they'd be willing to give us a contract for the same.
So that question just came up. What is the absolute deadline for getting a hard number into the warrant article?
So we have to hold the bond hearing. I think Casey's looking at it right now. We have to get the notice out for the bond hearing. The good news on that is my understanding that we can put the number out, but we can refine that up until the deliberative session. So if we were to put the number out, the Board, the question becomes the voting in favor of by the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee.
But we can do that at the deliberative session. The Budget Committee usually schedules a meeting afterwards, so if we voted a price in, and the people, then we would be okay, and then, correct?
January 17th is the last day to hold the bond hearing, and after the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
January 17th, if they didn't hear it on the microphone, so to get it recorded.
And there's a noticing requirement, I believe, of 10 days in advance of that, so we'd have to have it noticed in the paper for the 7th, for the 17th. We're hopeful to get them out earlier than that this year.
Can you get a contract price by that date?
I can reach out to Alba and Cobb Hill tomorrow, ask them if they would, if they're-
Put it in stock.
Ready to stand behind their numbers, and I think that's, that's, at this point, I think that's the only option we have.
I would almost think they, they should have, I should give them plenty of time to answer Brian there a little bit, because they have all the backup documentation already from the quote that they provided early on, and the revision that they did on it, so I would think that would give them plenty of time to get us the number that we'd be looking for, so.
Are there any outside various and sundries, things that aren't included in their plan? Parking lot, anything else?
The soft costs, if I remember correctly, that was about $300,000, soft costs, plus the moving, so, you know, you're, you're looking at, by the time we're said and done, probably $400,000.
So you're, we're looking then at about a 3.4? Is that what you're, if Cobb is at $3,700,004, we still have to add $400,000 to that, so 3.4.
3.5.
3.5?
3.5.
I want to, I want to say it was like 3.20 was the soft costs.
So 3.15 is your 2.2 million. So if we get up to 3.5, and you get 2.3 million, 2.4 million? Doesn't have to, you don't, you don't have to have it until the project is probably-
We will continue to talk to donors, and we'll try to get every dollar possible, but right now, I, I don't think that we can make a commitment that that number's going to be markedly higher than 2.2 at this point. We may be wrong. We may, we, there may be people listening tonight and, and getting encouraged by what they're hearing, that, that may come forward, but we feel that-
Are the Friends of the Libby willing to themselves guarantee as an org, as a group the money? The Friends of Popwellen guaranteed their monies regardless of what they raised from donorships?
We have not discussed that at a Board meeting. That would, that is something that we could discuss at our meeting on the-
Maybe, maybe the Friends of-
December 8th, but-
Maybe the Friends of the Libby would have to take a loan, or a bridge loan for a balance until they continue, because once the building is being built, of course, you're going to get more donors. They're going to see a beautiful structure coming up, and there will be more people. But a bridge loan from you guys, or a guarantee for a bridge loan for your balance of your 70% would be something I think that would be advantageous to the town and the voters. They would look upon that very favorably.
I would just add that based on experience last year, there was a requirement for the Friends of Popwellen to do that for our Bond Council.
Correct. So we're not doing anything unusual, we're not doing anything unfair, we just did this. So it's just-
If, if you could provide us with the information that the Bond Council would need, you know, they must have some information as to what kind of assurances they, they need. I can contact them tomorrow as well.
Any other questions or topics that we want to go over?
This is, this is tough, because right, right now, our tax rate is in good, good shape, and this will be something that affects it and takes us from a reduction in our tax rate to, who knows? Again, it is up to the taxpayers of the town to determine. They did last year with the Popwellen Arena, so.
And, and my understanding is, as I think Lynda has spelled this out pretty eloquently at times, is that by bonding it, it is the future taxpayers who will benefit from the museum who are sharing the cost of the restoration, as opposed to current taxpayers who may not be here in subsequent years, so.
I did, when this came up in front of the CIP, I sold it as a 70-30, because that's what we had, and I also told them about your great management plan, which was going to give us a chance for the Board to not have to manage the museum. So that's what they heard, so there is a certain, a number of people have heard 70-30, and we're going to come out with something else, and I just want to let people know, that's what I knew at that time, and that's how I sold it.
Okay, that's, I mean, it's understandable, you know, as Patton said, no, no battle plan ever survives combat. As soon as, as soon as the first shot is fired, something changes, and it's understandable. And I, you know, just, although we are not prepared to discuss your comments on business plan, we feel very encouraged that there's a lot of common ground, and that we will get to a workable solution for the post-restoration operation of the museum.
I think that's a good solution for the taxpayer, in my mind, as one of the Selectmen. I think that was a very nice plan that you brought forward for us.
Yeah, kind of, I feel pretty good, too, about reaching out to Cobb Hill and stuff, and I assume, you know, I kind of feel like Brian said, too, I think we're going to come in somewhere in that middle area there, between the two numbers, or Luke said it, or from that end of the table, anyway, sorry, guys. But, and that allows us to put a number for the, for the taxpayer, for our portion of it, as a not-to-exceed number, and then, because we put things out to bid, you know, so hopefully those numbers come in lower, and we're- in lower and we're able to, you know, come in under what, you know, our amount would be if, you know, if we're above the 900,000, 700,000, whatever that number is there and stuff, if we looked at just the 70/30 split, so. And then we have some options too. You know, we've talked about, you know, without having to really change the footprint of it, as you talked about, then you still have those rooms to, you know, to sell the naming rates to and stuff. But there's some options to look at there, you know, how much of that, that roof, can we look at a different option on, what that, because that was a big number there, on ripping that entire roof off and redoing it? Is there another way of doing it and saving, you know, 100, 200,000, whatever there and stuff? So, I mean, some of these could add up substantially, so. I know that's all kind of looking in a crystal ball right now, but, you know.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's where we really need to, going forward. I mean, and the, the long range construction forecast too is, you know, prices not only have stabilized, but are, are starting to come back down, so.
Hope.
You know, we can hope that that continues through next year as inflation starts to stabilize, maybe possibly too. So with those two things, and really having a sharp eye to, you know, what we're actually putting into the building in the sense of, we can build a top-quality building, but, you know, looking at things like roof design and windows, you know, and things that make sense, you know, you can, there's, there's, there's potential for savings all along the way and not by reducing, you know, the quality of the building. There certainly, we've, we've looked at it in the public safety building, we've looked at it in other buildings in the past, but we're just going to keep a really tight eye and a keen eye to what's being put into this and what we're being told needs to be put into it for the building, so.
And I, and I know that the citizens, the taxpayers of Wolfboro, when they see how much you have vested in this, are, are going to feel like you're building the museum for as reasonable a price as can be done. When you put yourself on the line, they know that it's not money wasted, it's money well-spent. And I think that's why, and I'll speak for me, not the other board members and not the Budget Committee, but shocked that the Pop Whalen Rink went through the Budget Committee and through the town vote with a 70% approval. 100% approval, I think, or only one in the Budget Committee was against it. And the taxpayers saw what they were doing, that they were putting themselves out there, putting themselves on the line, trying to do it the best way they could. And it, it was a shock to me. I thought it was going to have to, like the Town Hall and like the Library, come back a second or third year. Perception is huge.
Linda?
Yeah. I'm assuming that you, the Friends of the Libby Museum, are going to sell this. Where I find myself as a, as a selectman is, I got a $12 million public safety building to have to sell. And so it would be great if you would take, I mean, we'll speak to it, but we're going to need an awful lot of help. We've got, it, we've got some very big ticket items with that, and it worries me on how much the taxpayer, yes, they're willing to put money and see value, but that's going to be a lot of work for us to do. So if you guys are willing and can take the brunt and speak in favor and, and put up your vote for and all the other stuff, that, that would help me.
We will be well-represented at every possible public session to discuss the items and the support that's coming from the private sector.
Good. Thank you.
Hey, it's been a long battle, but it's been a good battle, and, and I think this is going to be-
I can't, I can't guarantee I will be there personally because I'm supposed to have a knee replacement in February.
We'll forgive you. You've carried the ball a long time here, so no.
I'm Jim Raymond. Are you looking for a new MOU? Or are we going forward with an understanding, how, how do you want us to?
I would say do the MOU after we get a contract number and then base the MOU on the contract number so they lie.
That's fine.
Does that sound reasonable?
It does. I don't, I don't want you looking, I don't want my client looking at me and saying, "Where is it?", when I didn't know I was supposed to do it yet, so.
Other board members feel?
I, I, I put it off to the side. Whether we're putting the warrant on, on the warrant or not was, in the contingency of that MOU, I'm fine. We're either going to put it on, or we're going to put it on with what percentage, and it's going to go that way. And I think Brian's, then how the two groups are going to relate afterwards, we probably do need a MOU to make sure we're all lined up.
That's part of the business plan discussions as well, then.
Yep, it is. Yep.
Now, the warrant article will have hard numbers on it as to the, the cost of the project and the contribution from the Friends.
Absolutely.
As opposed to, it not, it's not going to reference 70% or any other percentage.
No, because it's what we have in hand.
It's going to, yeah. We, we need to talk to hard numbers.
Yeah. I agree with that.
That's what the contract will give us.
Yep.
And that way, we're able to, with the deliberative session, to adjust that as if we get fresh numbers in, you know, the end of January, something like that, we could bring them forward in February at the deliberative session and, and, you know, adjust the number at that time.
And my understanding is that the Budget Committee meeting to discuss warrant articles is December 20th? Is that?
I believe so.
Right off?
20 and 27, but that is as long as this board has given.
And that could be a question.
Okay. December 20th and 27th are the dates.
Okay. Good to know.
For the TV. Any other?
Then there'll be a bond hearing after that.
Yes. That would be in, up till January 17th at the latest.
February 7th.
February 7th, the deliberative session.
It would, usually we'd try to do the bond hearing enough in ahead so if we get input that we could make changes and then have another one if we had to. So I would try to get it so we have that ability to do that, not wait until the last day.
Yep.
Yes. Yep. Yep.
Okay. I have one somewhat unrelated topic, the felling of the trees at the Libby property. There is grant money that came through Friends of the Libby, and it has a deadline of December 31st-
Right.
-that it has to be done by. And also, the, there has to be someone present, someone from the Friends could do it that, that's going to document the tree felling because that is part of the grant also.
Okay.
So we need to be notified when that is officially scheduled to happen, okay?
I found out that I needed to fill out a shoreland protection permit for that. I did that locally here, the local one. I just got the paper approval yesterday or Friday, it came through, you know, I think Friday it was. So I picked it up yesterday. And so I've got to have a conversation with, with Tavis, our planner, on that. If we're all good on that, I will be back in contact with Northern Tree to set the date and stuff for them to come up there, ready to go. Contract's been signed and sent to them. It's all ready to go. They'd come up and, and get that done. They understand that we need to have that done and completed, you know, this year and stuff, so they're on, on the same page we are. So we will make sure you guys know, when we actually set the date, what it's going to be and everything, so. The only thing I will need from that too is the location of where we're going to put the logs. I know there's a group we've talked about-
Yeah.
-that there was going to be a storage spot for them to go. That's part of their, their contract with us is to have a local area to put the logs, so knowing that we had one here, I just need to know where that will be when the time comes, not right now, but.
Information on that? Well, come, come up to the microphone.
I think the original plan was what trees are good enough to mill are going straight to Bobby.
Okay.
Anything that can't be milled, if the town's willing to give the trees away, I have, it can go on my property. I have plenty of room to take wood.
Okay.
There was talk also about all the chips. Do you have, do you have a place for chips?
We have a place in, in town to get rid of the chips. We have a place where we put all our stuff that we chip, so.
Yep.
Told we could put out, put those there too.
Yep. So I guess probably just maybe check with Bobby just to make sure he's got room.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, and if not, we'll, we'll figure it out. I know Alana's brother has plenty of room on his property too.
Yep.
If we have to.
Okay. Yep.
Will you just say your name for the record?
I'm sorry. Kari Lauber.
Yep. Thanks, Kari.
I think we've covered a lot of ground tonight and come to a, a lot of common ground. And I, I thank you all for your hard work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
We had offered to work with Mark on just drafting the warrant article, but it's not, it's not, it's not magic, it's standard wording, so I'm assuming, we represent 35 towns, I do this all the time, so I'm happy to help, but I'm not offended if you don't need to do that for you.
Thank you so much. We will, we're going to be talking warrant articles here shortly. Obviously, based on tonight's conversation, this article will probably be tabled until we get feedback from Alba and Cobb Hill, and then hopefully I can have a refined article for the 7th.
Sound good?
Just one last question, Tom. When I talk with Alba and Cobb Hill, part of the Friends' requirements is, is construction to begin in 2023. Is that correct?
I would, as, as soon as, as soon as possible is the term that we're seeing from some of our donors. So, you know, I, I think, you know, it, obviously, it, it all depends on who, who wins the bids and when you can get on their schedules and everything. But there, I, I think there's probably stuff that could be done before the end of 2023, even if we have a full season. There's probably things that, on the, on the construction list that could get started earlier than spring of 2024.
Okay, I will-
I may be mistaken, but-
I, I will, in my conversation with them, articulate that we'd like to get started as soon as possible if the article passes, um, meeting.
Are, are we going to then run, are we planning to not have a Libby open next summer? Or should we run through one summer and start it? You may need to help us on what you want. You know, we're going to get the thing done in, in March. You're going to have to get it out to bid. I would say try to get a good part of the summer done and then-
Did, did the packing estimate give a timeframe for how many weeks or it would take to get everything moved out and into storage?
I-
I don't remember either. I remember reading through it, but I don't think it was that long of a timeframe.
Yeah.
You know, I think it was, I think it was less than a month, wasn't it?
I, I, I would be lying right now. I tried to give you-
Yeah. He's a, obviously, whether there's a season or abbreviated season or no season is going to have an effect on, on the town's operating budget for the, for the Libby also. So there's a, a lot of things that kind of have to be done in a sequence, I guess.
I just was getting, trying to get your feeling as a Friends of the Libby, whether you were interested in having it open next summer or whether you prefer to have the building done. That just gives us some to look at.
Yeah. You know, I, I think the restoration is best started as soon as possible, but I, given an election in, in March and the, the need to, you know, lock in prices and bids and everything, that I can see a scenario where there's at least part of a season there.
Okay. Yep.
I mean, just like, things like even procuring windows that are not standard sizes, 16 weeks now, so I mean, might get better, but, you know, even if you were able to purchase them in March, you're not going to see them till the fall. So, I'm just things like that, you know. So I think, you know, at best, if, if it was signed in March and we had a, we had a, you know, a contractor that was going to sign on the hook and be ready to go, then by fall, they should be ready to go, but.
So a quick, quick review of that document. It, it's total estimate for packing and moving is 38,000, and it looks like they'll be able to have it done in a matter of a week.
Is that out and back in?
Um, I don't know about back in.
Yeah, because we're going to, if we get the stuff out, we're going to have to get it back in.
True.
Unless somebody here wants to volunteer.
We'll be carrying it back in.
Oops, we missed that piece that's carrying in.
I'm sure it's out and back.
Looking through that, any, anything else, Tom, or?
Um, I think that covers everything that we were prepared to discuss tonight, and hopefully it's given you the clarity to, to move forward.
Yep. And then we, when you folks get a, when board gets a chance to put together, I assume you probably want to list them out in written form and stuff, and then we get together and go over the business plan, comments and stuff, and-
Yeah.
You know.
Does, does the town view that as being a critical element prior to the warrant article? Okay.
I don't.
I don't either.
I figure we have 18, 15 to 24 months after-
Yep.
-passage of the warrant article to iron out that.
Yeah, I don't want them to get confused. They can just deal with it, and we can deal with that in another point. Voter.
Do you, but I, we want to make sure there's a image of working together on that, and if you need something from us to create that image, you know, that, yeah, we can work this out, that we talked about, you know. So the voters don't say, gee, are they at odds over the business plan? No, not, not at all.
Right.
I think-
Yeah.
That's, everything you raised, I think is good points, and I'll work, you can work it out.
Yeah, I think it's just clarifying some things and, you know.
As long as that's the message that's out there, yeah.
Yep.
We got to talk about our partnership.
Yeah.
Yep. Nothing, nothing jumps out whether that was both ends of the move or?
Happy did well.
Okay. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I entertain a motion to, unless we have anything else we want to discuss while we're in the trustees, otherwise I'd entertain a motion to come out of the trustees.
So moved.
That good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're back into our regular, regular meeting here. Let's see. Oh, to do my agenda. Okay. Warrant article review. Mr. Pinyo, I assume you're going to walk us through this?
I'm going to try to. You have in front of you a PowerPoint outlining the warrant articles to date. We had a very productive meeting today with some construction engineers for roads, so you'll see some changes as we, we go through this. You, you also have in front of you an Excel spreadsheet that Casey's put together that outlines the total-
the total asks for 2023. Mind you, um, at this time, there are a couple of items which still need to be cleaned up and clarified. Um, two employment agreements, one being the ASME contract and the other being the police contract. Um, hopefully, we will have those done in fairly short order to come in front of the board for ratification. We also have, um, the operating budget, which we still need to, uh, get through the, the public hearing with the Budget Committee. Um, and then the Public Safety Building is listed here at the $12 million figure. Um, I'll talk about that when we get to that article. And same thing with the South Main Street from Pickering Corner, the Smith River Bridge. Um, we'll talk about that as, as we, um, develop. Um, there's a lot of asks here. Um, I'm, I'm not afraid to say that, um, we put together a CIP this year. Um, we're pretty close to what the CIP asks were. Um, and I think we're going to have to potentially make some very difficult decisions. Um, with that said, the first slide that you have outlines the CIP projects. Um, mind you, this does not include the capital reserve appropriations. And the highlighted items in yellow, those are the, um, all encompassing the Pickering Corner to Smith River Bridge, um, project, which we'll get into shortly. As you can see, that number is $27,811, $811,000, and we're at $29 million and some change right now. So, we've got some work to do. With that said, the first article that is in front of you is the Public Safety Building. So, what we anticipate happening here is tomorrow, we have a bid opening that will allow us to choose our construction manager. The, um, bid opening will take place. After that, we will hold interviews, and then they will take the design, which has been, um, created by Banwell, updated with collaboration from the fire chief, the police chief, and, um, they will build out a guaranteed maximum price for the project. Our hopes are that as we do this, we, we have a, a refined number that we will be able to bring back a little bit in the, at the bond hearing, and hopefully a, another, uh, iteration when we get to the deliberative session, um, based on the construction manager going through the space needs and the programming to develop what we need. So the article reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $12 million for the purpose of structural replacement, expansion, renovation, and equipment replacement of the Public Safety Building. Further, to authorize the issuance of not more than $12 million in bonds and notes for this purpose in accordance with the provisions of RSA 33, the Municipal Finance Act, and to further authorize the board of selectmen to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity and other terms thereof, and to authorize the board of selectmen to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid grants and donations, if any, which may be available for said project, and that may reduce the amount to bond, and to comply with all laws applicable to said project, and authorize board of selectmen to take any other actions or to pass any other vote relative thereto." That is the article. Any questions?
We really don't have a whole lot of information.
Yeah, uh, so let's, where we're at on that one. Hopefully, we'll be moving in a better direction on that after tomorrow. Smith River Bridge, so, we had a meeting today with StanTech to discuss this complete street project. If you recall, when this went through CIP, um, we had a project that laid out completing the water line, completing the sewer line, putting in new stormwater, um, catch basins, et cetera. Um, the, there were a couple of takeaways from this. Um, the water project alone is $2 million. The sewer project alone is $3 million. Um, and the, StanTech does not believe that this project can be done for less than $10 million as a complete project. Um, the other thing that makes this project very difficult is, they can only do one of these a year. So, for example, they can only do the water line in one year, and then they feel it's prudent to go back and do the sewer line, and then the following year, go back and do the stormwater. They, they, based on the traffic, the patterns, they, they don't believe that they could do this as a complete project. So they believe phasing it is the appropriate thing to do. The problem with raising all the money at this point is, as we've seen cost escalations, we can't predict what those costs are gonna be in two years. So, based on that, um, we have received preliminary award for, um, vintage water main replacement from the, um, Pickering Corner to Smith River Bridge, um, that's equivalent to $1.6 million. Um, 1.2 million in loan forgiveness, uh, another $50,000 in loan forgiveness, and a $310,000 ARPA grant. So, based on the conversation that we had today, we feel that it's prudent to come forward with a new article, um, which reads as follows, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2 million for the purpose of replacing vintage water mains, uh, on South Main Street from Center Street to the Smith River Bridge. Funds shall be utilized for engineering fees and water line replacement. Further, to authorize the issuance of $1,690,000 in bonds or notes for this project in accordance with the provisions of RSA 33, the Municipal Finance Act, and to further authorize the board of selectmen to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity and other terms thereof, and to authorize the board of selectmen to participate in the State Revolving Loan Fund, RSA 48614, established for this purpose, and to allow the board of selectmen to accept such monies as become available from federal and state governments, and to authorize the board of selectmen to take any other action, any other vote relative thereto, and to authorize the town manager to sign any related documents. The town has been awarded a New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services American Rescue Act grant in the amount of $310,000." That is the article. Any questions? Uh, Brad may be able to help me answer him as well, as he attended this meeting.
I, I just say, I, I'm far happier with this warrant article. I still, with the other one, do not believe the town should be repairing and doing the state roads, and I would like to see the town, see if we can get, working with the state to see when they would redo that area. And my understanding is that this, uh, bond is calculated in the new rate study?
I believe it is. I, I actually reached out to, um, Keith today, uh, to ask about the final, um, presentation. They should be having that, and they should be coming to the board on the seventh to present, and I believe that is factored in.
And if it isn't, will you get it factored in?
We will.
Okay. And the other thing is, if I heard you write that the reason we're going to do one a year is because of traffic, because that is gonna be a question people are gonna ask us right away. You're gonna do this how many times? And we need to be clear on that answer of why we're doing it in that manner.
So, in the conversation with StanTech today, they believe the volume of traffic that we see here, and their experience in dealing with the Center Street project, that there is, they, they can only do one of these trench digs a year, um, based on the amount of time that they have to be able to dig. Um, the, the hard part with the water line is, um, while they're doing the work, they're gonna have to put in a temporary water line through the street. So, you know, there, there's a lot of moving pieces on this project. Uh, I feel much more comfortable about this than where we were, um, while it was all in, well-intentioned to do the complete street. Um, I just saw nightmares everywhere, and I think StanTech saw the same thing. Um, would you agree with that, Brad?
Absolutely. Um, just add a, you know, a couple of little things, too. On this water project here, we're gonna, we'd be replacing the water services all the way into the buildings to the meter, not just to the curb stop, to eliminate any lead, possible lead joints, lead lines, to get that all completely out of the system. Um, I'm not sure if that's part of the requirements for the vintage water line, um, grants and stuff there. I believe it is, so, um, so it really, it'll improve, you know, dramatically the quality of water that all the, you know, buildings and businesses all get between here and, and the bridge. Um, and also, just to understand, you know, this is gonna be done in either the fall or the springtime. There'll be no work done during the summer months at all, which is one of the other reasons, too, to phase these in, do water line one year, sewer the next, and then, you know, the third year, approach the road. And then, to Linda's point, that gives us the opportunity to really explore with the state to come up with the plan on the road part, you know, the finance and what it entails and everything, too. Um, and that would be from right away to right away. So it's gonna include sidewalks, curbing and everything. It's not gonna be just, uh, fogline to fogline. So it encompasses the entire, um, aspect, aspect of the road.
Right. And then, the only issue is what part is ours and what pair is the state's?
Right.
Will we start dealing with this area? Okay.
And StanTech is comfortable with the, the, the price tag of, of the 2 million. The original number was 1.6, um, but they, they feel very comfortable with the 2 million.
On this one, do we put something, uh, to the effect that it will be taken from the Water Enterprise Fund and that have an impact on the tax rate?
Yep, we, I, I can certainly add that in. Um, that's, that's a good point. Any questions? And again, this is bond. Uh, Libby Museum, so obviously, I'll, I'll change this one up based on the meeting which has just occurred. Um, and hopefully, I can get you an updated draft tomorrow. Operating budget, um, same language, we just need to wait for the, uh, numbers. Municipal electric boat, um, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $170,000 for the purpose of replacing the municipal electric boat. The amount of $170,000 shall be funded from the Electric Enterprise Fund. This expenditure shall not lap, uh, shall not, shall not result in any increase in the tax rate. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 327, Roman numeral six, and shall lapse on December 31, 2024, or upon completion of the project whichever occurs first." No tax rate impact, um, as it's part of the MED's, um, funds. Uh, Barry is working on providing me backup information on the proposed boat. Um, once I have that, it'll be plugged into a, the PowerPoint presentation, and he'll be able to speak on it. Um, any questions you have about this project, specific to Barry?
It's just a lot of money for a boat, so.
I assume.
I'll be interested to see it.
Assume some of the insurance money, whatever comes in on that would go towards this?
I, I don't know what we will get for insurance money. Um, that, that's a, that's a valid question. Um.
One other question is, bigger question is how big the boat is, because, you know, we're talking about town dock space, too, and that boat's small, and.
I, I do believe it's a larger boat. I believe it has a center console, from what I recall.
Okay.
Um, and he also has a hoist programmed in it for being able to lift transformers.
Is that in the CIP thing?
Yes.
Okay, I was trying, I was trying to look, I was, thank you.
But he, I, I did talk with Barry this morning, and he is, um, getting me the information on the PowerPoint for this.
I, I think I'd like to see the, um, brand, the specs, and everything on the boat.
I believe, I believe the specs are, um, I believe he got those from, um, Public Service or Co-op. One of his, um, competitors, he, he took their spec, but I, I can actually get that and go from there.
Does it come with a trailer to move it and so on and so on? And I think it's right here.
Well, on all of these, we're gonna get some good backup, and I'm, I'm assuming that that, you'll have a map and everything on the Smith River Bridge. You know, the more backup we can get and the more explanation, I think the better off we are.
Yep. So, I mean, we're just trying to get the language kind of cornered right now. So we'll get that built up. Uh, hopefully, I can have something for you for next round. Next, uh, mini excavator. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $130,000 for the purpose of purchasing a mini excavator. The amount shall be, $78,000 shall be funded from the general fund. The amount of $26,000 shall be funded from the Water Enterprise Fund. The amount of $26,000 shall be funded from the Sewer Enterprise Fund. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 327, Roman numeral six, and shall lapse on December 31, 2024, or upon completion of the project whichever occurs first." At this point, the estimated tax rate impact would be 33 cents per thousand.
Point oh three three.
I'm sorry, point.
This is one I would like to put maybe on when we go to take a look at where we have to cut. I don't feel necessarily we need to throw it out right now, but I think it's one that a year from now, we could, we could purchase it. You know, I really feel we're gonna need this cut back if we're gonna get that Public Safety Building.
I'd like to see, um, what we currently spent for the last couple of years on rental for mini excavator, because that can actually be an, a value that comes off of this cost.
So, we did actually remove that from this year's operating budget, um, based on the conversation I had with Steve Randall and Casey. Um, we can see if we can get the actual rental, um, costs associated with this.
So you, what you're really saying, if we take this off, we'll have no ability to rent a mini excavator, 'cause you pulled it out of the budget?
I, I think we can probably figure out a way to get it if we need it. Um, but that is correct.
I'd still like to put maybe on it.
When I read through this backup stuff here, the budgets were, I think it was $9,000 for the highway, and I believe $9,000 for the water department is what they reduced their operating budgets by, you know, not having to rent the mini excavator, so. I remember reading that this afternoon.
So we will, um.
I mean, I may be the only one who wants to put a maybe on it.
I put a no to revisit.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got that as a revisit. Uh, okay, so moving along, sewer pump station upgrades. Um, this one's a tough one, so always, uh, to give a little bit of background information. Um, last year, the town approved monies, um, for Lainer Street and Mill Street to remanufacture and build out those pump stations. Um, that estimated cost, uh, for Lainer Street was $1,270,000, and for. and for Mill Street was $1,680,000. Since that time, escalation has hit us. The, right now, the Lainer Street pump station, we are short $118,000, and the Mill Street pump station, we're short $420,000. So, we're asking, coming forward, asking for funds to be able to complete these projects. The basis of design is moving along well with the engineering fees. HDR is working diligently on this. They feel very confident in being able to complete the projects as we have the updated budgets. So, the article reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $600,000 for the purpose of paying for increased costs for Lainer and Mill Street Sewer Pump Station. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 327 Roman numeral 6, and shall lapse on December 31, 2024, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first." I can try to answer what you may have for questions. I'm sure there are plenty.
You always can count on me. Really, not a question. I think we, as a board, need to realize that this was not put out to bond last year. So, the debt of this Mill Street pump station is not on the tax rate, which will hit again with this other. So, when I look at what we're putting on the tax rate, that Mill Street pump station is part of the impact. And that is going to be big, so.
Correct.
Question, Jim, does HDR, they feel comfortable that both these pump stations can be completed by December 31, 2024?
Yes. They're actually, they anticipate being able to start construction in the spring. Some of the components have already been ordered. If you recall, previously, the Lainer Street pump station was not going through engineering.
Right.
And one of the problems that we ran into with that is it wouldn't go through DES review. Now, this will go through DES review, which the project should. But they feel very comfortable, and I think they're about at 90% on their, their engineering at this point. Any other questions? All right. Sewer line extensions, "See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $500,000 for installing low-pressure sewer extensions on Forest Road in the area of Cary Beach and Varney Road in the area of French Street. The appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 327 Roman numeral 6, and shall lapse on December 31, 2024, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first." These are two areas where we have got issues with septic. We've got issues with water quality in these areas. Therefore, these projects came forward. My concern is, I am not feeling terribly comfortable with the $500,000, or, yeah, $500,000 to complete this project. Varney Road is 900 feet, and Forest Road, to tie it into Sewell Road, is about 2,200 feet. I did reach out to Horizon's engineering to see where they're at with the design, so that we could have the engineers give us a more current estimate. I have not heard back from them. This, this, this is a, these are both good projects. I'm just concerned that we aren't going to have enough money in these.
So, where do you think it needs to go? I mean, we're better off to put it up higher and bring it back than to have it lower and have to yank it up later.
At this point, Linda, I wouldn't dare to guess until I, I can get this off to the engineer.
Okay.
I, I just, I don't know.
Okay. I have two things that I really need to know. One is, I want to know the RSA or the town ordinance that will force those building lots, those houses to hook up, and what is the penalty if they don't? Because we've had a hard time, you know, and we had all sorts of hassles when we put the sewer line in on Sewell Road, and people had to hook up, and there was all sorts of issues. And we did an extension down on Clark, and we gave them a period of time before they wanted to hook up, that they had to hook up. Was it five years or something, or they changed their septic system because the line went down? And that was because there was a house down there that wants it. This one, to me, is the water quality in Jockey Cove, and that we should probably sell part of it that way, because if this isn't done, we're going to have to do something else down there.
Yeah, and the same thing on Varney, the way the property is configured, they simply, I believe there's three homes down there that can't get septics designed on the piece of property. So, very well-intentioned projects. I'll reach out to Horizons again tomorrow, but I'm very concerned about the numbers.
So, I'd like to put this on a revisit?
Yep.
I had a thought, too, Linda, was that, you know, if we didn't have enough money to do both of these, if we chose, you know, to kind of back a little bit, phase it in, my thought was to, you know, push and do in the Cary Beach one, the Forest Road one, and maybe, you know, following you, do Varney Road. There's a possibility to do this, too, if, you know, if we stick with the $500,000, and that number seemed to work for one of them, you know.
It sounds good, Brad.
You know, it's just another option to think about.
It does make, yeah.
Yeah, and again, you know, I think when we get into the nuts and bolts of this with the backup, you know, we will be able to explain that, and hopefully, I will have more refined numbers from the engineering firms at that point. So, we, thank you for putting on a revisit. Police vehicle replacement, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $66,000 for the purchase of a police cruiser replacement vehicle and ancillary vehicle equipment, with $5,000 from the Police Detail Revolving Fund created by Article 23 in 2006, which is accumulated from special details in prior years." Additionally, this warrant article also grants permission to the Wolfboro Police Commission to dispose of one existing cruiser by sale, auction, trade, or disposal with any proceeds returning to the town's general fund." Pretty standard replacement of their vehicles. They're not adding to the fleet. Just a standard replacement. No questions? The next two are pending contracts. The ASME unit and the police unit, we're still working through the negotiations at this time. Town road upgrades. Again, we had a productive meeting today. The Excel spreadsheet that you have from Casey reflects the correct language. In my haste of typing this this afternoon, I made a minor error, and I'll correct that as I read through the article. The article reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1 million, not 700,000. For the purpose of upgrading and engineering for town roads, sidewalks, and drainage systems, authorized funds in the amount of 700,000 from the town's unassigned fund balance. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 327 Roman numeral 6, and shall lapse on December 31, 2024, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first." So, what we discussed today in this meeting was, we've got a significant amount of roads that require annual maintenance. We, one of the changes with the new director is the staff is not going to be doing road construction. They're going to be doing road maintenance. We anticipate the road work that will take place next year, at this time, to be Trask Mountain Road, Upper Trask and Trask Mountain Road in the area Diamond Corner and out part of the way on Haynes Hill Road. We have a ballpark estimate of that project of $700,000. And then, we want to take and utilize $300,000 for engineering. The thought process here in our conversations with StanTech and with the director today was, if we can get ahead of the engineering, we can have much better scopes of work at this time next year, based on that engineering. And that scope of work will give us the ability to be ready to go out for bid in advance, as opposed to playing catch-up. So, that's what the ask here is. Estimated 700,000 for construction with 300,000 for engineering, knowing full well that this engineering is really geared for 2024 road upgrades.
So, 300,000 for engineering, so this whole warrant article should be for a million?
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't say that.
Yeah, he said that Casey.
My worksheet is correct.
Correct.
PowerPoint is, says 700,000. It should say a million.
When you, when you read it, you substituted the million dollars for that first 700,000.
I wasn't paying attention, I guess. I, 300,000 in this year is a lot for engineering. You know, that's just, you have to explain that. That's a lot of money.
That also covers for their, their observation to come in as the projects are being done, to do their inspections, you know, twice a week. Like when they would, you know, like they were redoing someone Pleasant Valley Road. When the paving was done, they'd been up on Maplewood up there in that project. So, it's, it's not just that they're doing the paperwork. It's, you know, the field observation, too, and stuff.
That's my feeling. That's a lot of money for that in a year when we've got a lot going on. You know, if you were talking about 100,000, I'd be in a different place. But you're talking about 300,000 for just engineering. I, you know, even to get us up, if it wasn't a year, then we're going to ask them for 12 million, and then turn around and ask them for at least a million, million five for the Libby. And we've got a sewer project, we've got the bonds that we haven't even bonded for the Mill Street pump station. That's why I'm saying, it's not that I'm against the theory that you're coming forward with. I'm looking at what we're going to do to that tax rate. You know, and I just think is, if we can do, if it was 300,000 for some kind of road work, I think it's easier, soundable to the taxpayer, but to 300 for engineering, I just think that's a lot, my two cents.
Would you be interested in taking more out of fund balance to cover that 300,000?
I don't know what you have for fund balance and whether, where we are in relationship, you know. I guess I would take money from the fund balance. I'm, I'm looking at cutting the impact to the tax rate that I see coming. This year is going to, went down. This thing is going to go up. We had a lot of extra money that came into us last year. You know, the impact of that 12 million, and then turn around another, that's where I am. That's why, the reason why I say that, just really concerns me. But I may be the only one.
And part of our conversations this afternoon, too, were that, I mean, we originally started at 400,000, and we did, in our meeting this afternoon, we scaled it back, and we actually scaled back a little bit of the project, too, and stuff, to try and bring that down. So, you know, I don't feel too bad with it being with 700,000 of this million coming out of the general, I'm sorry, the fund balance, and only 300,000 being raised, so.
Revisit?
I may be the only one. I'm the one who's got the concern about.
Well, I think we, we, as well as staff, need to, after the meeting today with StanTech, they're going to provide us with more documents. So, I think it's prudent for it to be a revisit.
Yeah.
I mean, can we do half the engineering this year and half the engineering next year? Can we prioritize projects that need engineering done this year and projects that can be pushed off to next year?
Well, the premise here is to get to a point so that we have that engineered plan sitting there right now, next year. So that when we're, when we go to the warrant, the engineers can say, okay, look, roads are of this caliber are 320 feet a foot, whatever that number may be, and be able to sit there and say, okay, look, you're looking at a project of $300,000, $500,000, whatever, whatever that may be. As opposed to what we're doing right now, which is, okay, we're going to pick a couple of roads, and we're going to throw a dart at the dartboard and hope we land it. And that's essentially kind of what we're, we're doing right now.
We've been pretty successful in the number of roads we've gotten done, so I don't want to.
Agreed.
You know, and, you know, I could see putting some money in there, but that's a lot. That's a lot of money for that.
Okay, so we'll revisit that nonetheless. This is completely new, the next one. This, this is something that you have not seen. And this, this was something that came out of today's meeting. And this is upgrade, upgrade to Green Street. If you recall, last year, we did receive some funding for vintage water lines. We've still got more work to do on this article, but this kind of mirrors what we've done on High End Park a couple of years ago. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $530,000 for the purpose of upgrading Green Street. Funds shall be utilized for engineering fees, stormwater drainage systems, the replacement of water in sewer mains, and rebuilding the roadway. $100,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund shall be for the purpose of engineering and replacing vintage water mains which service Green Street. $430,000 from general taxation shall be for the purpose of engineering and replacing the existing sewer main in Green Street, stormwater drainage systems, and rebuilding of Green Street. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 327 Roman numeral 6, and shall lapse on December 31, 2024, or upon completion of the project." So, this kind of ties in with the previous road monies. One of the questions that was asked in my absence when you reviewed warrant articles previously was, can we bring the road monies up? We are bringing the road monies up, and between this and the previous article, it actually falls right in line with what the request was in CIP. Any questions, comments?
No, usually when we do a road, we do it all. And I imagine that road's not in that great shape either.
It's not, and the, the water lines are of the age it needs to be.
They're vintage. And also, that sewer line on that road is about a 12 to 14-foot deep cut in there for the sewer line, so it's, it's not an easy project either.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense. You get something done, finished off the table. No, I don't have a problem with that. No, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. We received this from the assessing office, there's no funds associated with this to appropriate, but it, it does involve a financial impact. Shall the town vote to, in accordance with RSA 7227A to re-adopt the provisions of RSA 7228 Roman numeral two, previously adopted for the optional veterans' tax credit as $500 per year? If re-adopted, the all-veterans tax credit previously adopted will be, will also be $500 per year, the same amount as the optional veterans' tax credit if re-adopted and approved. This article shall take effect for the 2023 property tax year. And this was provided to us from the assessing office, it has not been, none of these have Moving on. School resource officer, middle school, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $72,653 for a school resource police officer position, SRO, for the middle school to be added to the town of Wolfboro's Police Department budget with the SAU 49 paying the town 50% of payroll and benefits for this position for up to 73 school days, August 2023 through December 2023. The SAU will raise and appropriate $22,338 to be given to the town in year one for August 2023 through December 2023. This position will be filled only if the town warrant article and the SAU 49 warrant articles pass. If both articles are successful, then this position will start June 2023 and will be funded 100% in future years with the SAU paying half of the payroll and benefits for up to 180 school days. Any questions you have? I know Linda's got a couple.
Yeah.
I can get those questions for the chief of the police commission and Casey may be able to answer them as she helped them to ink this article.
One of my things is that this is not just a resource officer, there are years, there are times of the year that it's going to be an officer for the police department, and that should be split. This is for the middle school resource officer, this is to be a Wolfboro patrolman. So that, I find that the people aren't getting the full picture if that's not the case. The other thing is it says 100% in future years, are we going to have an agreement with the school district? I mean, in the past, we've had these and we've had, paid for a while, then all of a sudden, they stopped paying and we pick up the tab. So I would like an agreement, if it's a 10-year agreement or whatever it is, so we know what the future years are. Then I think also that there is the whole outfitting a new officer, and that's not in this warrant article, which I think is still part of the cost of another officer. And I would also like to know how the person is going to get around because we may need another car. And then after this is done, and we also, if I am correct, don't we have also another officer in the operating budget that's doing the elementary schools?
Uh, not any, not to my knowledge.
There was a couple open positions, I wasn't quite sure.
No, they, they had the juvenile services officer, but there was a spanking.
They took him out and they put him a part-time SRO.
Oh, they did.
Yeah. So they are, yeah. I, I just think we need to know, because you're starting to get more police officers. Are we okay with cars? I don't want to have us do this, and then a year later, we go, oops, we need more cars. You know, I think the taxpayer needs to see the full impact of what this is. I support it, but I, I felt like I kept on having questions I wanted asked.
Maybe the car that they're going to retire, if it's not used a lot, can be used just for the school resource officer, because they're only going to be driving.
Okay, but then they have to change that warrant article to say that. That's what I'm, that's why I'm bringing up the question, if they decide not to retire one, then we'll take it out of that and we'll know that it'll be in.
If it's not a patrol car and they're driving from the police station across the street to the middle school.
So I have forwarded your questions that you did send me to the chief and the police commission. I've got your questions here as well, and we will have them ready to answer those questions for you on the 7th.
Thank you.
So would that be a revisit?
I guess so.
Yeah.
Yes, I would say so.
This one, you've, you've got two options inside of a single article. This is the Fire Truck and Apparatus Replacement Capital Reserve Fund. Option one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $196,000 to be added to the existing fire truck and apparatus replacement capital reserve fund, which is under the custody of the trustees of trust funds with the selectmen designated as agents to expend. Option two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to enter into a lease purchase agreement in the amount of $700,000 payable over a term not to exceed three years for the purpose of acquiring a replacement fire engine for, and for the selectmen to authorize the sum of $300,000 from the existing fire truck and apparatus capital reserve fund for the first year's payment for said purpose. The reason you have two of them in front of you is with what has occurred with the ladder truck, the funds are not in that account to be able to move forward with a purchase. At this point, I'm, I'm hearing from some associates that delivery of new apparatus is 18 to 24 months. So you have in front of you a couple different options. The chief will be refining this number. And what this does for the fire department is it puts them on a very good schedule with the first due apparatus being in place for 10 years and then at the 10-year mark getting bumped back to a second due position for 10 years. The, the other caveat to this is option two, you have to have a supermajority for exercising the lease option. If we did the lease option, the conversations that I've had with the chief, that annual appropriation of the $196,000 for the term of the lease would be rolled into his operating budget and we would not appropriate funds to put into capital reserve during that lease period. I can try to answer any questions you may have, and I'm sure the chief will be able to answer them in greater detail on the 7th.
What's the next piece of equipment that needs to be replaced?
It would be Engine 4.
And when does Engine 4 need to be replaced? Because when we had to appropriate a little bit extra money to get our ladder truck, the chief did say we were in good shape, we didn't need any vehicles going forward.
Correct. And I think he reiterated that at the budget committee meeting.
Correct. So I'm just wondering, when does Engine 4 need to be replaced so we know what the best option is? A lease or to keep just putting money in, in the, the fund like we did for the ladder truck?
I would defer to the chief on that one for the 7th. The, the problem that I see is the 18-month to.
Correct.
24-month lead time, and I know that they are having mechanical issues with the engine on Engine 4, but I, I don't know the particulars.
I think, I think the board also needs to wait, we'll know after the December, I think 5th, whether they're going to add another employee to this budget. And I think that's the budget committee may do that, and I think at that point, we may want to think about what we want to do. If we're looking at the tax rate, and if this is going to come out of the capital reserve fund, then option two would not have an impact on the tax rate, if I'm correct.
That would be correct, and if, you know, the other takeaway on this is, if you do recall, the CIP recommended the appropriation, and this is actually an error on my part, which was not caught. The CIP actually recommended appropriation in option one of $300,000 because the, the chief normally did the 180, 196, but he was going to be $100,000 short. So I, I think the takeaway on this is, one, I got to run that back by the chief to get clarification on that. And two, he should be able to answer the questions for you on the 7th, specific to the, the condition of the proposed apparatus replacement.
Would this bill be going out to the same company that did the ladder for us, or?
I can't answer that question, I don't know what the chief has planned.
Yep.
I, I do know that the inspection of the apparatus went very well.
Yep, good.
You have any questions?
Well, if I, if I understood Jim right, is that if during the time of this three-year lease, we are not going to have to put in the 169,000, am I correct?
So that would be.
Or is that going to be the payment each year?
That, so, I've asked him to reach out to the lease company to get the particulars of it, but that would be correct. As far as I can see, we, we would not make that first year's lease payment until the truck is done. Which that first year's lease payment is actually in the capital reserve of that 300,000. And then from that point going forward, the amount of the lease would be put into his operating budget.
To his operating.
So if we lease a truck, what's the terms of the lease? How many years?
This is a three-year.
Three years.
This is three years.
Just three years?
We, it would be a three-year lease purchase.
Yeah.
Okay, three-year, is there additional costs to the lease over just purchasing for outright cash?
There is interest charge associated with it, usually they're around 2%.
Okay. Still even in today's.
Bless you.
She's still here.
I mean, traditionally, or for the, for a long time, it's been 2%, I would just like to see if it's 3%, 4%, 5%.
Yep, and I, I can have the chief be ready to answer those questions for you on the 7th.
Thank you.
But it would be a tax impact in year two and three of the approximately 200,000.
Correct. How many engines do we have? So we, the current configuration is two engines, a tanker and a ladder.
And this would replace one of those?
This would replace one of those, and it, it puts it on, the newest engine is a 2014. This would put them on a 10-year first due, 10-year second due, and out the door, which, you know, is, is a very good practice.
Jim, what year did we cut down the number of trucks? Because we don't have as many trucks as we used to.
We reduced it when we made the agreement with the ladder truck, which would have been in 2021.
I think that as we put together, when we work, talk about this, is that we have cut back the fleet in this, you know, in 2021.
My understanding is that our trucks now can be dual-purpose trucks, so that we don't need to have the fleet with, at least that's what the chief mentioned to me, that we don't need to have as many trucks because our trucks now can perform different, you know, two, two duties at the same time.
That's fine, but we don't have that number of trucks, we are having to replace that number of trucks.
In my opinion, we, we have, you know, the optimal number of trucks for this community, in my opinion.
I mean, maybe we could also, depending if, the only thing wrong with Engine 4 is the, is the motor itself, I mean, motor replacement, motor rebuild?
So the, the problem with that is, you know, you're, you're putting money into a vehicle that's pushing 18-years-old, I think.
Okay.
And the frame's starting to separate, it's, it's known as a dual-frame piece of apparatus, the frames are starting to separate. And they actually considered trading that when they got rid of other engine, ladder truck, but there was no value in it. So from a cost-benefit standpoint, in trade-in value, it made more sense to trade in the other piece of apparatus as opposed to this apparatus. And that was the option that the department went with. Okay. I will have the chief ready to speak to that on the 7th. All right. Next one is Public Works Vehicle Equipment Replacement Capital Reserve Fund. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,000 to be added to the existing Public Works Vehicle and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, which is under the custody of the trustees of trust fund with the selectmen being designated as agents to expend. Again, on the 7th, Steve will have a better breakdown of what he's got proposed for replacements. The, the takeaway on this is the cost of these trucks are going up astronomically, the lifespan of these trucks is reducing because of the quality of the apparat, or the quality of the equipment that's being built. And we're in a pickle here. This, this, this is a tough one. We've got to have the rigs to plow the roads.
Maybe this year, we have to make a choice between the mini excavator and this, or cut this budget by the cost of the mini excavator. Cut this $300,000 by the cost of the mini excavator. But again, I still want to see how much we've spent in rental over the mini excavator over the last, I don't know, five years or something, and, and see, you know, what's the cost benefit of the mini excavator?
I would like to see the spreadsheet, and I'll find my last year's, and what the spreadsheet is on the replacement of vehicles. We, this is one of the accounts that we had it all laid out, and the difference on what we thought the prices were. Because then that will give us some justification for raising it to where we are, you know, and what we, you know, I lost, I lost track of how much we took out, and then we had money from ARPA, and it seemed like for a while, we moved money here, there, and everywhere. So what trucks have we replaced in the last two years?
So I, I don't think, the only, the only trucks that have been replaced have really been pickup trucks. As far as the big trucks are concerned, if you recall, we, we did spend a significant amount of money out of the capital reserve fund to rebuild two motors into trucks. I don't remember which ones. Steve, Steve will be the one to be able to answer. We want the one.
The red one.
Red pile truck.
The red one, yeah. See, that's what I'm trying to get, you know, what we had, what we have just purchased and what those prices were compared to what we were estimating. Because what you're saying to me, we have this nice chart, what we really didn't do is keep it up with inflation, so some of the costs that we were looking at to replace trucks aren't realistic. So then that gives us the justification for this. I don't know whether we could cut this by 20, 50,000 and what that does, and so I would like to see what that does to this. And so I would like to see what that does to the spreadsheet.
Again, I, I would, I would just ask that you allow Steve to come in, have that conversation with him. And I, I think there are probably options out there, to be able to make that happen. And I'm-
Can you ask Steve if it would be possible to take our mini excavator and make it, maybe it's, I could be wrong, maybe it's a Cadillac, maybe he can make it a Chevy? Maybe it will suit its purpose? I mean, I don't know if there's different levels, and what he needs. If he, if he needs this unit, because it does exactly what he needs, that's, that's one thing, but I'm just wondering if-
Yep, I will, I will have those conversations with him, and he will be prepared to speak with you on the seventh about them.
So that'll be revisit?
Capital Reserve Fund for the sidewalks. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $125,000 to be added to the existing sidewalk capital reserve fund, which is under the custody of the trustee of trust funds, with the selectmen as they designated as agents to expend. So this year, we put out a bid for sidewalks to be reconstructed. They came back, those, those bids were not reasonable, and, and the reason they weren't reasonable is because by the time we got to asking them to do the scope of work, put the bid together, it was October, and there was no way that they were going to be able to complete the work before snow flies. So the, the conversation that we had today with Stan Tech was, what happens next year when we put this out? If, if we're able to appropriate additional funds, will we get a better bang for our buck to get sidewalks done? They feel absolutely in agreement that if we put the bids out in January contingent on the vote, that we'll be able to get a significant amount of sidewalk completed with a better bang for our buck. And there was also a, a segue out of that conversation about if we do this, we also don't want to be doing sidewalks that in two years, we may be digging the road up on. So that was, that was a very pointed and good conversation. So I know we've got a lot of sidewalks in town, I believe it's about seven miles. The question becomes affordability with the amount of warrant articles we're asking for. And where are we going to program this work?
Well, that was my question. Okay, you want this money for us. We did 75,000 last year, so I would like, I would suggest us going back to 75. We can't do everything. But I also would like to see where. What are we looking at? What sidewalks are we, you know, there are some that are worse than others, so I would like to see that. What we used to do is, we used to put money in for sidewalks, and then other projects came along, and the sidewalks just, for a long period of time. So I'd be very comfortable to cut it back to 75, which is what it was last year.
I'm, how much money do we have left from the 75 from last year, or was it all used?
75,000.
He just told us.
Used it all?
We did not use it.
Use any of it?
Not use any of it.
We still have the 75,000 in the capital reserve.
You did authorize something, but did we?
I think there was a minimum-
7,500?
Yeah, for the, for the bidding and engineering. So it's mostly there.
Yes, correct.
I'll make a motion that we cut this to 75,000.
Motion, a second on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I'll get those lists of what was bid and what is proposed.
Okay, that would be great.
Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be added to the existing Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund, which is under the custody of the trustee of trust funds, with selectmen designated as agents to expend from this capital reserve fund. Thank you, Suzanne.
Keep an eye on us.
Same amount as last year. You know, we, we've, this, this has performed well for us. Example today, well, the past week, we've been dealing with a minor issue, we're trying to get it figured out now. There, there's an issue at the railroad station with the oil tank. We're working through getting that resolved right now, but that's essentially where we'll end up most likely. Taking that money from, to make that repair is, is from this account. We don't know if we're going to have to replace the oil tank, or what exactly is going to transpire, but we'll find out in the coming days.
Were we supposed to replace the boards down there? I mean, they look awful.
So that is absolutely on the horizon, to get that done. And, you know, I'm hopeful that if we can get this oil tank problem, because the oil tank is actually under-
Under the building, yes.
So apparently every time people walk by, it whistle on it. Talk to them. So, and, and the, the oil company won't fill it anymore. So it's kind of a perplexing scenario, but we're working on getting that fixed now. We'd anticipate next year, in the spring, hopefully we can replace that. Hopefully, you know, as we've alluded to, you know, construction prices are coming back into reality a little bit, so hopefully we'll be able to get some of that pressure-treated or appropriate decking to-
It's like it's coming-
It looks horrible.
Yes. The sidewalks, are we going to do the sidewalks, or are crew going to do sidewalks, or are we going to have a contractor?
Contracted out.
We're not going to do any more work?
So we'll do maintenance, so for example, they did a repair up in front of Morrissey's, needed to be done. They were able to rip out the, the small section, level it out, and, and bring in the, the product to make the repair. But they're not going to do full-blown construction projects.
So are we going to get a maintenance plan on what they're going to be doing? You know, a kind of like an asset management plan on how they plan, if we're not going to have them doing the construction, which took a lot of their time? It seems to me that they should have key projects that they're going to do, and that we get around the whole town within whatever, you know, is a reasonable period of time to do that.
So that, that's some of the, the conversations that Steve and I have had. He's, I've been, I've asked him to take pictures. So for example, you know, they've, they've been out, and, and we'll get this put together going forward, but, you know, they've been out and they've done some repairs to catch basins, rebuilt the catch basins, which is going to prolong the life of the roads. They're, they're doing some more trimming along the road edges, and, you know, one of the big things that they really plan on doing going forward is the ditching of roads. So, yeah, the-
It'd just be nice to have a plan.
Focusing on maintenance.
Okay.
Now, that doesn't mean that, you know, if they've got a small section of road, that they've got to gravel, you know, and that was talked about today. You know, if, if it was a small section of road that they, they're grading, and they need to bring in, you know, six or eight, 10 truckloads of gravel to supplement the road, they'll, they'll do that, but that's, that's not going to be a complete reconstruction with culvert replacements and that type of thing. It's going to be just the maintenance.
So are we going to spend more time main, not that I have any interest in it, dirt roads?
Uh, this year, we're gonna.
I mean, it's part of their maintenance cycle, because if I would say one thing that happened over time is, those kind of roads got left out.
Yep, and that was, that was talked about today on Beach Pond, some of the dirt sections there. Haynes Hill dirt section.
Yep.
And Trash Mountain.
Okay.
Stoddard, Stoddard, yeah, those are all discussed today. So productive meeting, and I think that we're heading in a good direction. Next one, Dockside Parking Lot Capital Reserve Fund. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be added to the existing Dockside Parking Lot Capital Reserve Fund, which is under the custody of the trustee of trust funds, with selectmen designated as, as agents to expend. This, as you can see on my list, is not necessarily a high priority item. You know, we, I think we still know that we're a few years out from doing the parking lot. We just did a gym coat over it, it looks excellent. I think this is an area that you might be able to make up some balance.
I'll make a motion that we remove the capital reserve fund payment to the Dockside Parking Lot.
Second.
Motion, a second to eliminate 100,000, or basically eliminate this article. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous?
That was easy. Wastewater Treatment Plant Capital Reserve Funding. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $200,000 to be added to the existing wastewater treatment capital reserve fund, which is under the custody of the trustee of trust funds, with selectmen as designated as agents to expend from this capital reserve. So this one, in talking with the contracted operator, there's a need to replace the two pumps which pump affluent to the pond. These are pumps that, once replaced, when we go to do the plant upgrade, they will remain in place operating. So this isn't something that we would be disposing of in a year or two, or whenever the wastewater treatment plant comes in front of us. This is a necessary item. I, I strongly recommend that we keep this one.
Pump the stuff up.
Don't want to come back down.
We do not, we don't want to deal with that one.
Okay, Water Resources Non-Capital Reserve Funding. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be added to the existing non-capital reserve fund pursuant to RSA 351C, for the purpose of a watershed management plan, including engineering design permitting best management practices for stormwater drainage and nutrient mitigation, grant matching and education, which is under the trustee of trust funds with selectmen as agents to expend from this capital reserve fund. This is a standard article that we've had in the past couple of years. I'm not sure what the balance is today in this account.
101, you've put in 50,000 twice.
Twice. I, it'll break my heart, but I'll do it. I would cut this to 25,000.
Second.
Motion, a second.
Just get rid of it all?
No, I, I still think that there are some projects that we may have coming up.
Some that may? Of pro waters.
That's right, maybe. I, I don't know whether there, I think, now, this is me personally, I think there's more work to do at Albee Beach than just the parking lot, and so, and that lake is going to go down, so I have my eye on that.
Five-year drawdown.
Yeah, and we've got money, 20,000, that's going to take care of the Rust Pond. We're going to do a 319 grant, so there's some money that we're going to have to spend. I'm willing to cut it in half.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Cut that to 25,000.
Wonderful. Next one, Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be added to the existing capital reserve fund, which is under the custody of trustees of trust funds, with the selectmen designated as agents to expend.
Questions, comments?
Do we have any money in the reserve fund right now?
103.
Which we've got 40, I believe, which is spoken for.
Which you voted in to give out for the lights.
Lights, yeah.
So the 40 is gone.
Not out of that number yet, no. I just think this is one, we've had huge amount of donations there, this is just there so we can keep repair and keep that ski slope going.
85 is enough?
For this year.
Yes, it builds up, and as we need something, whether it's a groomer or something like that, we have funding there to-
And we should go over that spreadsheet again, you know, and I think for this year-
That spreadsheet's important, yeah.
Yeah.
The groomer and the Zamboni and all that stuff. So the good news is, on the groomer, you know, we, we've dumped some money into the groomer for this season. We, we've installed new tracks, which is a huge asset. In speaking with the mechanic who works on these things on a daily basis, he said the machine is really in pretty good shape, short of one valve body that he's not terribly concerned about. So hopefully this machine will, will serve us well. If you recall, four years ago, maybe, we dumped quite a bit of money into the machine with a bunch of pins and bushings and other items. So I, I think with the new tracks going on it this year, it'll improve its operations this year, reduce the breakdowns, and hopefully we can get a few more years out of it. I think the bigger item to be concerned about at that location going forward is the motor house.
Yeah, but when I asked, when we put that 40,000 out there and spent it, I asked about that, and I was told that was off the table.
Yeah, I mean, at this-
I'm not happy, so, I mean, never mind, I've said enough.
He's still smiling.
Yeah.
I'll keep my mouth shut now.
I would have to confirm, but I think the 40 already came out.
Did it?
I think so.
Ah, so we're in good shape.
Well, you got to see the spreadsheet on what-
Yes.
What you're going, it doesn't tell you anything, and they have a spreadsheet, and that should definitely-
Questions? One.
Okay. Tree removal and replacement expendable trust fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum $125,000 to create a tree removal and replacement expendable trust fund. Said fund, said funds shall be under the custody of the trustee of trust funds and designate, the board of selectmen needs to be, and designate, and designate the board of selectmen as agents to expend.
I've got some comments on this one, and I, I'm not going to raise the amount, but $125,000 seems a drop in the bucket, when we looked at 661 trees and 230 were to be removed as soon as possible, so.
$1,000 a tree.
I mean, I, I think we need to deal with, you know, removal, instead of looking at doing, at one point you said, do an inventory of another area. I'm not into doing the inventory, I'm into getting those trees down.
So the, the one place that, or the, not the one place, the three places that I had envisioned doing inventory of them would have been on, around our, our parking lot in Beach, down to Brewster, over to Albee, and down at Kerry. There's none at Kerry, really. There are some trees there, young trees now, but that would be the area that I would envision us looking at. I agree, Linda, this, this is a drop in the bucket. I've got noted here, the 230 trees that need to be removed on the South Main Street, Center Street, and Pleasant Valley area. Now, we have removed some of those trees.
Yes, we have.
Which is a step in the right direction.
Still a bunch marked.
There's a lot of, and this, this is going to be one of those that unfortunately, you know, we're going to be having problems with for a long time.
Well, hopefully another year, we could put more money into it, we're in a better shape. Are we going to have, for the deliberative session, or when we deal with this, the talking about how we're going to replace them? about how we're going to replace them? That how we're going to-- what the mechanism is going to be to do that? Because I think that's just as important as we get them down to get something up.
Yeah, I mean, I know that we've got to sit down and come up with a plan to, okay, we're going to remove this many trees. We're going to replace them with this many trees.
Because we--
We just need to get it--
Yeah, we talked about getting people to donate. So to me, if the mechanism is there, you know, we can start doing it without having to ask the taxpayer all the time for it. So if we can get-- figure out what the mechanism is that would be--
Yep.
I understand you've had 10,000 things to do, but the deliberative session, you know, is in February.
Yep.
Hoping by then, we could have something--
Hope so.
Nailed down.
And that is the end. I told you, Suzanne, it was the last one.
I have a couple of questions on the spreadsheet, and if I read the spreadsheet correctly, between the general fund and the sewer fund, but that's going to come out. Never mind. I would like whatever the number's going to change because we just removed the South Main Street project. I would like to know, based on the amount we're going to bond, what an estimated cost will be on the tax rate? And let's say we're going to do them all. They're pretty large. We're going to go out at a 20-year.
Okay.
Just to get-- you don't have to be-- I'm looking at a ballpark figure.
So the 12 million and then the nine--
Yeah, that's going to change, too.
Yeah.
So whatever--
What number is it that you're thinking that we--
Well, when we get that and the other, just so you have-- what I'm trying to come up with is, okay, what is going to be the real impact to the tax rate when we get all these things on? And if I read this, also, we've made a cut in it, but what was on the sheet, there was a million dollars over what we had done in cash the year before. We need, at least I feel as a board member, I need that to be either able to sell it or to take a look at this and say, we really can't do it all.
Yep, you're up 34 cents from last year without the bonds being in there. So like 14 million in bonds over 20 years? Is that what you'd like to--
Yeah, why don't you do that? Yeah, just give us--
Throw that out there.
Yeah.
Sure, that's easy.
Okay, this is about 34 cents.
Any other questions, comments?
And I have been updating this as we're going along, so I will send it back out to you.
No, it's not on our agenda, but if the board's okay, we've had Suzanne sitting here the whole time, and if she'd like to have a public comment, the board would be okay with that?
Absolutely.
Would you like to speak to us or ask us any questions, Suzanne? Could you use--
How about you?
Give her the mic. You can come up and sit right on the other chair beside you, Casey, if you'd like.
Get a special seat tonight.
You just might get elected to something.
I saw some-- these are your preliminary--
Yep.
So I saw some wording that could use a little help, perhaps, so I'll send to you, if I may have a draft paper copy.
Yep.
Yep.
You want this one?
And then the other one--
I'll give you Dave's.
The one that I'm not sure of is the school resource officer. And it comes to mind, and I don't know where, I picked it up along the way, but there's something about one town meeting cannot bind another meeting going forward. So that school resource officer had a wording in there about they'd pick up 100% going forward. I don't know if we can vote to require them to do that, so. I don't know where I got that from, but if I could ever find out, I'd be glad to share it with you. That's all.
That's why I wanted the agreement, because an agreement would be the legal document.
Yeah. They do, for the current SRO, they do have an annual agreement that they sign.
Annual, but there's nothing that--
That's right.
I want-- he said 100% in future years. Well, what is the future year in the Warren article?
No, but it's 100% of the person. That's what it was meant to say, you know, because you're only doing a half a year in '23, technically.
Oh, I thought--
No.
Well, they would do-- yes, but they'll do their percentage in the future years. And so my feeling is, what is that? Are we talking one year, two years, three years? For a while, the resource officer-- so their school system is paying half of the resource officer that's at the high school?
Up to 180 days.
Okay.
Because if it's a school day and they go to school, then we get 50% of that day.
Yep.
And we get 100% of all the other days.
Right.
Next, Suzanne. Any other-- was there any other comments? If not, entertaining motion to go into non-public.
Motion to go into non-public, please.
Motion to second. All those in favor? Yes, yes, yes. Okay, thank you.